There were two pieces. Okay, here we go. Now, the question is, how do I get on that? I don't remember. We may not get it on that. Dan. All righty. Hello. TV remote. Dan, do you remember how to get this up on that screen? TV remote click home. Oh, click home. Maybe I went and clicked the right thing. Okay.
There you go.
And then left on the remote. Does that make any sense?
There you go.
And then source.
Keep going left. One more.
Oh, to source.
And go up.
No.
There you go.
Hey. More on the screen. Why? What on the screen? I'm not sure.
Because the owl hears. The owl goes to whatever.
I mean, I don't know why we do the screen other than when we have presentations or something and somebody else wants to show something. Now, we don't have this screen right now because we don't, we don't know how Dax did all this, but when Stephen was here and we've got all this hooked up and running, he said, we're missing a part that hooks in so that both screens are running. So I think he's gonna have to get us another wire of some kind. But we are live streaming on YouTube.
Lord.
So Amy's not gonna be here. She's gonna be on my phone, but I have asked her if she would log into it and watch it and then give us feedback as to if it went smoothly or not. So, yeah, I feel. But it's it seems to be a little bit behind what this is.
What do you mean?
Yeah, so like this, it's, it's like it's a split second difference.
Oh, well, yeah, you're always.
Do you see what I'm saying?
You're always gonna have to wait.
Is it?
Yeah.
So there we are. Okay, here's Amy. Oh, Amy can see us.
I need to hair done.
Okay, get her on the phone.
Yes. We're gonna do the elections and then bring him on.
Did you see my other additions and yeah, we just maybe making changes, making changes. Because I ended up with paperwork from Mike Klein Peter. I didn't give copies to everybody. It's the letters that he has typed up regarding that revenue income, not revenue, income survey business. So right now, that's all signed with your name as president. So one of two options. We can jump to that and get a sign. And you go ahead and sign it. Or if we wait and you're not president. Then I know.
Trying to be. Thank you, but no.
Then I would have to go in after the meeting, reprint off everything and have the new president sign it with their name. So.
I'll just sign it.
Whichever way we wanna go about that will work and then he will most finish the rest.
You members won't hang on to this until I didn't find it because I.
Are you ready?
Just.
Okay, I will just put you on speaker and say you go here post Bruce on that little shelf. Okay, thanks. Okay, will you be in charge of me putting these on here? Okay, so we're gonna hang on to this one.
Yes, because I I don't, I need to figure out where the heck my extra binder is because I have like four or three.
Whatever else that needs to go in.
Given me. I have those. Later. Because usually I can connect to that. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Maybe, okay, there you are. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have four council members present as well as clerk treasurer. We're gonna do a quick deviation on our agenda. Corinne has some paperwork that needs to be signed that hasn't been listed as president, so we're gonna sign those real quick and then move on to our elections.
Attorney is.
Oh, and we are live streaming and Amy is via telephone. Do you have that paper?
Yes. Three different things here that have to do with the income survey.
So this is regarding the income survey that we have hired Klein Peter and Associates to do for us. Do you wanna give a little bit more of a rundown or is it pretty much?
I don't know that I can without looking at it. So basically what has to happen, a letter gets sent out to citizens. Klein Peter does all of that and the way he explained it before, somehow it's, it's kind of a random draw as to who the information gets sent out to. So that is one of the letters that we have up here. The other two pieces are pieces that go to Okra, which is the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. It's titled Census Data and Income Survey Differences and I depend on Mike Klein Peter because he's a professional, so he's put all the legal and fancy language that needs to be in this other letter to Okra that we just have to sign and send. So that's what we've got.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to officer elections, we'll start with nomination for president. I'll go ahead and second that. All those in favor? Post, motion carries. And we'll move on for nominations for vice president. And I'd like to nominate Bruce Bertner. All those in favor? Post, motion carries. Dave, would you like to switch seats with me, please? You have to sit next to her now.
Yeah, sit next to me no more. You're the man there.
Joyce, Joyce, what you do?
Say, I need a little help here. So who was the second on Dave for president?
Me.
Sarah, and who was the second on Bruce? Dave?
Sean.
Sean. Okay, perfect.
She gets to hand you that fun stuff.
One thing, I keep looking down.
Yeah, do you want to do it?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can.
I'm gonna nominate Randy Bruder to fill the open seat in the council.
I'd like to second Randy's nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm actually gonna have to sit over here. Oh, yeah, you'll have to swear you in first, Randy.
Okay.
All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Randy Bruder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully, impartially.
And I will faithfully, impartially.
And diligently discharge.
Diligently discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Thorn Town Town Council members.
Of the Thorn Town Town Council members.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, I do need you to sign this, Randy. And I think Sarah took off with my black pen.
I've got one. Move on, Lord, it's black.
Do you have an patch, please? Now, I'll go get you a copy of that.
I just realized you probably should be assigned away, right? I don't think about that.
All right, thank you.
What credit they could do, have you got that on here?
No, I don't have anything on there, but Dan has some stuff for water.
Okay, well, that's.
Or if you wanna leave that for utilities, then doesn't matter.
Well, that's okay. Dan?
I'm gonna go now. I'm gonna go at the end. Mine must take a little while.
You wanna wait then?
Yeah, we'll wait if that's all right here. Okay. Public comments and concerns. Nobody has any. Department reports, please. Fire department, nobody's here for the fire. APC.
No.
They left, didn't they?
Yeah, he said they didn't have anything, so.
Building inspector.
I'll be down.
You sorry?
I've got something for new business that's bottom, so.
Do you have anything, like, how'd your plowing go or any, any any progress, how things are coming along? Because we haven't talked to you really since you started.
People just needed, when they ask for a permit, just send their money in so we can get that process started. I'm having phone calls, I feel daily they ask where it is and I can't do anything because I have received yet. So that's, that's the biggest thing right there.
Is that it, new business? Utility department?
I don't have any.
Uh, yeah, I do.
I can't believe it.
Well, Eric Smith here tonight, we wanna recommend him to go on the utility board, start immediately, so we need your approval for that.
I'm Eric. Need resume or anything that you could?
I don't know. Corinne and I had this discussion and we didn't really know the answer for sure, but I know at the last meeting I was at, you were talking about you needed somebody on the plan commission that was on one of the other boards. He is on the plan commission. If he joins our board, that will fill your requirement if our board counts for that. I don't know.
Well, he's already a member as a citizen.
No, he's a member. Wait.
Of the APC.
Yes.
Yes.
So I think if he was to join the utility board, he could fill the role as a employee.
And I think we still have a spot open for a citizen.
That would be.
Which makes it easier.
Yeah, you'll still have a spot open, but it won't have to be.
Right, it'd be open for any citizen.
Just trying to help you guys out a little bit.
So we need to.
So we need to.
I would like to nominate Eric Smith for the utility board position.
Say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Eric, you're on there.
Thanks, sir. We're glad to have you installed too for real meaning price.
Okay.
You're installed?
Yep. All right, Eric, come on up.
I'm good, I'm good.
This is my third one of these today. Repeat after me, please. I, and state your name.
I, Eric Smith.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties and accept the responsibilities.
The duties and accept the responsibility.
As a member of the utility board of Thorn Town.
As a member of the utility board of Thorn Town.
That I will observe and obey all the laws.
That I will observe and obey all the laws.
Relating to said office.
Relating to said office.
Now in force.
Now in force.
Or which may hereafter.
Or hereafter.
Be enacted during my term of service.
Be enacted during my tour of service.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome aboard. And I need a signature before you go anywhere.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
That fills up your board, doesn't it?
That fills up my board. I do have one more. This is kinda, we don't really need any action on this right now, but it's something we need to look into and think about. We have three board members and we have four-year terms. And we're trying to stagger each board member. I don't know, do you remember Corinne, what Eric, is he going on a full term?
No, Eric, Eric will be a two-year term right now, so he'll be 25 and 26.
Okay. So we're trying to get him staggered. But if I'm thinking right, and I may not be, I've been, I can't wrap my head around this, I've been trying to figure it out, I think if we have three-year term for three members and four-year terms, that's gonna eventually catch up to itself and we're gonna lose two members at a time at some point. So I'm wondering about if we should make these three-year terms. If that's just a local ordinance or if we talk about it might be a state thing, I really don't know. But I just want your thoughts on making that three-year terms instead of four so that we always have one person going off and one person coming on. If you don't wanna do that, that's fine and we'll do what we're doing, but that just makes sense for me to do that if we can. We don't have to decide that tonight, but something to.
We need to check and see if we're off into, well, the state rules are, if, if we can do that, then I don't have a problem doing it.
Like you said, if it's a state deal, I'm, I'm not that worried about it, but it just makes more sense for me to be three with three members.
Amy, were you able to hear that?
Yes, you can.
Yes, yeah, I can hear that. Yeah, we could do that. We could change them to three-year terms. We just have to change the ordinance that's on the books because now the, the town ordinance says four-year terms. But the statute says we can do whatever terms we want not to exceed four-year terms, so we could change it to three-year terms.
Okay. We'll look at it.
So do we want to allow Amy to write the ordinance for three-year term? Because she's gonna ask that question. Right? Right, Amy?
Yeah, 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 sure. I can do that if you guys want me to amend the ordinance. I can surely do that.
Are you good with that?
That's what you wanna do, Max?
I think it makes sense, but I'm open to what you guys think. I just, I don't know, it just makes more sense to me because I think, I think, and I haven't sat down to try to figure out the math, but I think if you have three-year terms and there are three people and four-year terms, at some point, we're gonna end up taking two of them off at once. I think.
Well, no, if they're staggered, that.
If they're staggered, you just have one year where nobody comes off. You know, for a four-year term, you'd have three years where one person rolls off and then that fourth year, nobody would roll off.
Okay, so, so we wouldn't end up with two going off at once. That's fine.
When does Max's term end?
Max and I figured out that we believe technically we think his four-year term was up at the end of '24. Unfortunately, along the lines, none of us were ever really keeping track of how long people were in there. So when all this came up, losing two members at the one time, I started doing research through the files and that's when we found out and discovered that actually the utility board terms were designed to be staggered. Well, then somewhere over the years, they evidently just weren't, so.
Well, we didn't know, we didn't know there were terms. We thought the only thing they had was for design.
So as, as we got to looking at things, we ended up, and when Pat McPeek, I did his swear-in, so he's technically going to complete a three-year term. Then at the end of, so that's about 25 seconds, at the end of '27, so when '28 starts, then that person will be a four-year. Then Eric will be a two-year. And at this point, Max is actually starting his second go-around.
Corinne, one way to, you know, fix the stagger at this point, because Max, if you were done, did you say at the beginning of 2024 technically or the end of 2024?
The end.
The end of 2024?
Yes.
Okay, so he's starting, so Max would be starting a brand-new four-year term. Then we have one person starting a new three-year term, one person starting a new two-year term, then after that, everybody's on four-year terms.
Right.
And that stagger would be fine.
Right, and then if, if Max were to say in June that he says, I'm done, I'm resigning, then it'll be just like here for the town council, the person will be fulfilling the remainder of his four years.
Right.
And then we should have all that back on track for the utility board.
Well, we don't need to change anything.
If it's not gonna cause a problem, no, I, I just leave what it is.
Okay. The park board.
Um, so I missed our update last month. So a quick recap for Holiday on Main Street that you guys approved, we have roughly 1050, 300 people there coming in and going. It was really successful and we had a lot of input about wanting to continue that. We're anticipating to plan for 2025 in September, so we have a little more time because we definitely had some pickups that we could have used more time on. And then the Angel Tree program, we ended up helping 35 individuals, six families. We have come up with our 2025 event schedule because we were asked to, we couldn't count the big book, I put them in your guys' notes. But spring cleanups on there. We are looking at starting some new programs this year. Lisa Vita has signed over the 501(c) nonprofit board that was created to help with funding separately from the parks board. And Brayden Nicholson is actually going to be helping with the 501(c) application fee so that we can start fundraising for these programs and events. We've had a lot of really good feedback from the community on the things that we're doing and we'd like to continue doing them, but in order to do that, we really need to start focusing on trying to get that. We have sent a contract over to Amy via email to look over because we are looking at doing the farmer's market once a month this season and we need to make sure that we have an appropriate contract for anybody that is going to be working with us with his liability, things like that. And we are, as a board, interested in looking at possibly getting some quotes for a single stall bathroom at the Lions Park. It's been very attention that it's definitely something that's needed, especially with these two bathrooms not necessarily being good repair. Having something up there by the trail would be ideal. So we are reaching out to a couple of different local construction companies to see what their quotes would be for a single stall restroom there. And other than that, I think that's all that we have to do is to keep you guys up on.
Have you reached out to Gary for that bathroom installation?
We are just now starting that, so I, I do have to talk to him and I got him down and then Corinne also gave me a list of a couple other local people to look at. Brayden is one of them. We're not sure if that's something that he would do and then I know we've got Merrill, Rap, Nicely, and Moran.
Well, I just wonder if that's technically, are we off the sewer van to add any more hookups to our sewer system?
I believe we are, but we're gonna check on that.
Okay, because that's my only.
Pretty sure we are, since we had the addition.
Yeah, and before we get any quotes, we, we need to speak to them, which is on my status.
I just wanna make sure that, because we'll have to put a new title, because I don't think there's anything there currently. And then for the farmer's market, at one point in time, we did some research on insuring the farmer's market, like there, I do remember we went through, there was a lot of.
I don't remember.
And Amy, you might be able to answer.
Now, the way that the contract is that I sent her, I will say, and I don't know if this is the same thing or separate, but we do have a clause in there that states that vendors need to carry their own insurance within an appropriate amount as perceived by the town council and park board. And that it needs to be in place for the entirety of the season. If there's any changes, they need to submit it to the event coordinator, which be myself or the park board as a whole.
Let, get with me, it's a, there was something, and I don't know if it was like a state licensing or something that was a lot more difficult than we anticipated it to be at U.S.A. But I think that some of the work might have been done already in like getting that going and I.
Do you know who was in charge of the park board at the time?
Because it was a mixed bag of people, so it just don't want to forget to get them.
Okay, with you on that. I do know there's an, I wanted to say it's called an indemnification clause on there as well for any liability, injury, things of that nature as well, but I don't, I mean, I just sent that off to Amy today, so I'm sure she's gonna have to take a look at it and leave notes. And we did utilize other contracts from local townships. And we did utilize other contracts from local townships to make sure that we're kind of piggybacking off of what's already been in place with other pre-existing farmer's markets that are successful to make sure that we got everything in there that we could possibly run a problem.
I'll check in with Jay Tribbit with the list of all the other events that they're wanting to do, just to make sure everything's okay.
Spring and fall cleanup are things that we've done every year, and so those are on there as well. And then we only need two new ones as of this year, because we did do the July 4th barbecue last year. And then, of course, Holiday on Main Street. The only two new ones are going to, on this list are the farmers and artisans market, and then a community service day, which we are looking at some different options for that, that people within the community can nominate people in need for help, and we're going to try to create a community service day, whether it's for helping clean up yards or clear up brush, things like that. I'll keep you guys updated. It's still pretty far out. We're still working on the menu. There's only three of us.
Gary, how close is the sewer system to that Lions Park?
I don't think there's anything runs through that area. I know there's a manhole across the street on Pearl Street in the alleys, and then across Pearl. I'll thank you to get to the nearest sewer line. But I'd like to wrap though. I'm pretty sure that's where we ask.
Okay. You got anything, Bruce?
No.
Okay, stormwater? Anybody for that sanitary sewer? Okay, we're down to minutes for December 13th.
I think that's a typo. I think it's supposed to be December 16th. I got these dated correctly. So those-
Yeah. I'm making motion to approve the minutes for December 16th, 2024.
All in favor? APV register.
That's the stuff in here.
We'll save that for last. I'll give them the chance to look at it.
Yeah, and when you, when you get in here, there's two payroll dockets in there, and there's two APV registers to sign this time, because I actually put December together and then I put January together instead of having them mixed.
Want me to sign this?
Yes, please.
You got it under there.
Yeah, that's okay. We'll mark that out, and we will change that.
Payroll, same thing?
Yeah, they're in there, yeah.
And the true report now.
Okay, don't have a whole lot. I do not have any financial reports on the table since I'm in the middle of getting all of that year-end stuff done. It's moving along according to my schedule very well. I keep it all written down, so that's all good. There's a lot of things I have to have done by July 31st, and then the big AFR on Gateway has to be done by the end of February. That one hasn't been started. So a question that I had, we had talked once before about taking, what was it, November, December, January, on the health premiums, leaving water out of the equation and just letting electric and sewer pay for those. So my question is, until those new rates on water kind of help us a little bit, can we just go ahead and continue paying for health insurance out of electric and sewer?
Do we need a motion to do that?
I would like it that way.
Okay, make a motion to keep paying. Who is it out there?
Health premium.
The health premiums out of the electric and sewer. All in favor?
Okay. This is our very first time to livestream. So actually, since Amy was not able to be here, she is on the telephone, and she is watching it, and then she'll let, let me know if there's any glitches. As of right now, for now, and probably the two meetings in February, we're only going to set this up for town council, make sure we've got the bugs worked out. It is set up by our choice that the people in the public that are watching, they cannot buzz in, and they can't ask questions, they cannot speak at all, they are a view only. If someone from the public wants to speak, they need to be here at the meeting in order to speak. So, so that's shut off. Once Stephen and I feel comfortable that this is all running fine and that I have a clue what I'm doing, then we will go ahead then and incorporate the utility board, the park board, the APC, all of that will be done. There's a lot of work that has to be done. First of all, there's things that he has to set up because they're just simply over my head. So he will do that. Then I have to go in then and actually set up all of the meetings through this YouTube so that they're all there. And my intention is going to be on our website. So like, you know, I've said it's hard for me to keep up. I'm trying to get all this stuff posted every place it needs to be. So all of our minutes, when they're approved, have to go on Gateway. So, starting in 2025, minutes will not be on our website. Need to go to Gateway to review any of the minutes that we have. They're not going to be here on the website. The agenda, as we get going, I learned this after we had already sent out this link. So what I have done, anybody on that has signed up through the website to receive alerts, news, et cetera, I sent this out the other day. It has the link on there, and then that gets posted to our front page of our website. And so everybody can just go in, click that link to go to YouTube, and the meeting will be right there. But there is also a place when I do that, that I can put the agenda there. So that's where the agenda will be going forward. It wasn't there this time, but that's where the agenda will be going forward. I will not be posting it separate on the website. It'll be all through through this, this notification right here.
Do we have a link to Keystone for our minutes on our website? Can we include that?
You mean Gateway?
Yes.
I can put that on there.
Okay, that way people know where they can go.
As you, as you broadcast the meetings, are they being recorded?
Yes, yes. Now, I haven't gotten far enough to find out, you know, early on, Stephen and I had talked about the idea that whatever program he set us up with might be able to go through, do transcription, do the minutes and all of that. I haven't gotten that far yet, so it's baby steps. So I'm not sure that, whether this does it or not. So that is to be seen. Okay. I think that's all. Oh. I have given all of you, you found this big giant packet. I need you to replace those pages in your code book. So it took us a very long time this time, when I sent stuff to American Legal to get all of our ordinances for 2023. So we're caught up now through all of those ordinances in 2023. I will now have to send him 2024. But 2023 is when we had so many changes with building code stuff and et cetera, and it just, it took a long time. We had a lot of information going back and forth. And Frank, this is your copy. So those need to be, and Randy, I will get you a book. So hopefully I will have that ready for you the next meeting. If you want to look at one in between, you can come and borrow mine.
Do you want to do this resolution now?
Oh, we can. Yes, that was something we had to add on. Okay, so we have a resolution. Frank brought me a handy-dandy little letter that come from the state. And when the guys do what we always called project, so the police guys in their off-duty hours, they can go out, they do seatbelt violations, they check for public intoxication, I don't know what else. It seems like there's three or four things they do. But in the past, we have just called it project. And so the state has come through, they want it named Traffic Safety and Enforcement. And even on my checks, they want those words on there. So to help with that, we need to change the fund from project to read Traffic Safety and Enforcement. So that is Resolution 2025-1.
Need a motion?
Yeah, we have to vote on that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-1. Second.
All in favor?
And then this needs a signature from everyone.
Okay. Ready to move on?
I think so.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the contractor's progress for Main Street Alley project up by the Pizza King, and we haven't paid Bub for doing the job yet, and we need to get that done, so we need to pass that as a council to to get the check to Bub for the alley, and that's been approved by, the engineer has contacted Karine, and he's satisfied with the job that was done. And I was up there a week ago, and I talked to Jeff's wife, and she said they didn't have any problem with water in the Pizza King that came out of the alley project, so we figured we've got it fixed, so it's time to pay Bub. She's written a check, but I haven't sent it yet, so I make a motion that we close this out and pay for, pay Bub for the work he did up there.
One second.
All in favor?
Okay, so what we have here to sign is contractor's progress invoice. That gives me permission to pay Eddie. We have the certificate of substantial completion that is submitted from BFS that says that they're, they're good with the work. And actually, there's two different pages to that certificate of completion that needs to be signed. Now, do we need to do a vote thing to allow him to sign? Since there's just one person that signs? I know we've done that many times.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow Dave Williams to sign the substantial completion paperwork for the alley project.
Second. All in favor? That's it, it's only one.
I think that's because we are the owner. I believe, yeah. As far as I understand, yes.
Maybe go some of this one too, it says.
Get that taken care of, and I will release that check.
Okay, new business. We've got home inspection hardware, iPad for a building inspector. Where are we? Is that the two?
Just to, I think I read about the program, I love Karine, you guys, program all use for home inspection reports, backs everything up, very easy to use. I think it's from number eight, $299 for the entire year. I can use it at home, at the office. It's what I'm kind of used to using anyway. I go to, it's a nice vibe I could go and keep doing inspections, take pictures, and when I'm all done, I just email it to the client. They have everything, and it's what I was used to using, especially Harbor, with, I do a report from Harbor, I'd send it to them, and it was instantaneous. There was no coming back and having paperwork or anything like that, and I think the iPad was more than thirty-nine, if I remember right, but I actually found a cheaper one on Amazon today, and it's a little bit better. I think it was like $109. But I just, yeah, it was like 22 gigabyte and 128 gig, too. I mean, it was so good deal, and Android, but just see if I can be able to purchase those. I know I have a budget, but I don't know what my budget is, so.
So what's the total amount you're asking for?
Uh, so we, about $450, just to be safe.
Yeah, $450.
We'll do that on it.
Yes, I have a question. Because this is computer stuff, and we can pay for computer out of CCI, and the only thing that we're paying out of CCI is for our IT guy. Can we pay for this out of there and not out of his $1,500 budget? Or do you want it to come out of his $1,500?
I make a motion to allow Ben to pay for the software and iPad not to exceed $500 through the CCB.
Okay.
Second. All in favor?
Make sure you get yourself like a taste of that.
We'll get on it. So I have a question real quick. His paperwork is something that I sent out in my email with everything. Are you guys getting that stuff? Yes? Okay.
Honestly, I don't remember seeing that. I remember seeing the for the tablet.
Oh.
But I don't remember seeing that.
Oh, because there were, well, there were several pages, because I sent these all through together. They were all one, one complete. Okay, I just want to make sure you're getting it.
I think we're just not used to that many attachments.
Yeah.
Actually, it is.
Okay. I just want to make sure you're getting this, the main thing.
I saw the question.
And I'll talk to Stephen about figuring out what to do with your .gov email. Because we, we need that.
Little business is, we don't need, we've, we've already covered what what Max has talked about. Other business is, we don't need, we've, we've already covered what Max has talked about, which is how the other business is. So we will go with, Dan, you're next.
I'm next, all right. I'm going to be a little bit. Wanted to give you guys an update of where we are in the water plant, treatment plant process. Our P E R, remember our P E R is due in about two months. My handouts.
Yeah, I don't know why that's all of a sudden working, because earlier today it was 67 in here.
Max, Jerry, you guys?
The furnace.
Max, you got a max for what I'll play for?
What does the P E R stand for?
Preliminary Engineering.
I got a lot of handouts. Okay, this is, this is just one of the maps. Does everybody have one? This is just one of the maps that's going to be included, one of the many maps included in the report. The, you can see where the town limits are there, and then the areas that we're looking at for expansion. A lot of them are in the south, some in the west, and a lot in the east. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, we're looking at all over. Now, one of the things, Drumpy, that you brought up was having the plant over on the west side. We, that is one of the options, and we'll get to that in a minute. But I wanted to make it known that it really, for hydraulic reasons, it really doesn't matter if it's on the east or the west, we can make it work either way. Now, one of the things we're going to have on here is the limits of, of what you can serve currently with the current tank elevations. So that'll be, that'll be one of the maps. We're not there yet, but wanted to give you just an update of what that was looking like. Okay, now for the big stuff, if you guys really want to know. I don't need any decisions today, okay? I'm just going to give you an update of where we're at in costs. And I'm going to, we do need one decision made potentially, and that's the EDU impact fee. I've got some info from Jared on that. Okay. Let me get, give and get is this. These are the costs, and I'll explain what the options are in a second. Okay, option one is do nothing, that's always in the report. It basically is, you know, do anything, it'll grow, it's tapped out. Option two and three are basically the same thing besides the cost. They're in the same location, they're what I'm going to call the east plant, okay? Option four and five are the west plant. So let me talk a little bit about what you're seeing here. So the first figure there is construction cost. Contingency, we have put a 30% contingency on this at this point. I think that's probably high, based on our experience. Probably high, but we want to be not below bidder on any of this. So I think these are very conservative numbers. All this is very conservative. So in other words, I think they're high. Soft costs are engineering, construction admin, construction inspection, legal, bond counsel, geotech, things like that. So the total project cost, for example, on option two is four point, about 4.5 million. That gives you a future firm capacity. Let me explain this a little bit. Option two is putting in a filter that is 300 gallons a minute firm capacity, okay? Right now, you're at 150 gallons a minute firm capacity. So this doubles your firm capacity. It takes care of whatever Arbor's needs are and some more future needs. Option three is 600 gallons a minute, and it gives you firm capacity of even more. So what we would probably end up doing here is bidding both of these options out, because they're very, very similar, and see what the numbers come out once we bid something, and then make a decision. So like I said, there's no decisions that need to be made tonight. These are very preliminary numbers, I wanted to get them into your hands, so you knew what was going on. We still have two and a half months before we turn these into SRF. So there's going to be a lot of refinement to this thing going forward. Yes, Max?
I have a question. When you're talking customers, are you talking homes or pumps?
I'm going to give you, the next one's going to show you people. We're, we're estimating about two, little over two people per customer. That's probably level. This is almost the same thing, it's got a little more engineering data on it. It's got the project cost on it, and it's got population served on the far left. I didn't want to give this to you without giving you the first one. And that gives the options, in case you have questions. Again, two and three are the, are the east plant, four and five are the west plant. And before I get into what Jared sent me today, does anybody have any questions in what you're looking at? There's a lot of information on this page. I can sit up here and talk for an hour explaining it, but you guys probably don't want to hear that. Again, I would say that these are very conservative numbers, they're high. But our experience is, when you go to SRF, you want to shoot high, and then you bid it, and you want something low. Typically, we've always got something lower.
You mentioned something about the water tower heights.
Yes.
Is there, since they built a new one, and the other one has been here several years, the one on the east side. When they've been put at the optimum height for the pressure that was distributed throughout the city or not?
They would have been put at the optimum height for the city, but not as much to expand. So in other words, what I will tell you, let me show you real quick. You're going to get a map. You got two tanks, you know, for lack, they're somewhere in that ballpark. You're going to get a map based on elevations around. It's going to say, I can serve this area with these two tanks. Anything outside that area, you're going to either have to put in another tank or another booster station, or both. So the tanks were sized or placed at a height so that the pumps at the plant would fill the tanks. So there is enough pressure in the pumps to fill those tanks. So that's, that's what determined the height.
Well, what, what about the, the outgoing pressure out of the tanks? In our most cities, around a 40 pound pressure coming to the houses?
Forty, fifty.
So don't, I mean, that's got to be figured in on the height of the tank, doesn't it? For how far out you're going with it?
Absolutely, you're absolutely correct. Yes.
So what we've got now, we don't know right now how far out that can expand with, with.
We're going to, that's part of the stuff we're getting to, yes, yes. You've got enough height to cover a good area of, like Arbor Homes and some other areas that are looking to expand. If you get into a subdivision, let's say it's way out, way out east or way out west, that's outside the confines of where your tanks can serve, you would say, okay, you're going to have to put in a booster station and a tank that developers can have.
Well, booster station by itself, wouldn't run another subdivision farther out?
Yes, it can.
You wouldn't have to put in a new, another?
You wouldn't have to, no.
Okay.
There's a lot of places that just put booster stations in and don't put tanks in. That is very common. I wouldn't recommend it, it's not best practice, but it happens a lot. Okay, so one thing that you're going to see here in this next thing, this is from Jared. And again, I stress, these are very preliminary numbers. But I thought you guys need to start seeing what we're looking at. These are rates. Okay, so.
What'd you say?
Says, let me write the paper this time.
Now, this does include the $750,000 Oprah grant. The option one puts you at a big, now, $74 a month, all the way up to option four, which is $119 a month. So, and this is going to the bond bank. This does not include any kind of, if you got through SRF, and you got some sort of grant, that didn't include any of that.
What you're saying rate is, what you said, 74?
On option one.
You're saying that's what the rates are on me, or that's what the additional rates are on me?
Not additional, it's actual.
Okay.
Yeah. This isn't 36 plus 74.
Okay. Well, that's some good news.
Yeah, well, there you go, there's some good news. Well, I'm going to end with some really good news, okay?
Yeah.
All right, anybody have any questions on this? Something Jared put together today. And again, this is very preliminary.
Are these, are these rates subject to the builders adding on to the, to the home when it's, property in the home, when the person buys it?
It would be everybody's rates, including anybody new that wanted to build here. These would be rates across the board. But I think what you're getting at is what is the impact fee in the EDU? All right, so that's what I want to end with. That's the only thing I really need a decision from you guys on. Right now, your impact fee is $1,300, I think, for water. Jared and I have been talking today, and we are going to recommend that you guys bump that to $4,000. So, and we can justify that based on these new cost numbers. The, the $4,000, if you look at, for example, if you look at option one. Option one gives you the additional, let's see, if you take 18, 54 customers minus the current 749, now this includes the 770 that's already in Arbor Homes. That's 1,100 new customers times $4,000. That's 4.4 million dollars of impact fees. So you will notice that the cost on option one is 4.5. It pays for your project, but you've got to get the growth. And what Jared said last time, and I, Kreen, you asked this question when Mike was here. Can we use the impact fees to pay for this project? Probably not going to get them all to pay for the project, but you will get 70 to pay, help pay for this project. So 70, if you want to bump this up to 4,000, or whatever number you want to get, that's 280,000, that helps a little. One thing we've talked about on the impact fees is you don't want to price yourself out of the market. Right now, I know Whitestown's impact fees are somewhere around 4,100, something like that, on water. I think it's the same on sewer. I don't know what lettings are, but Jared and I both were looking at some things, and he thought that 4,000 would be appropriate. If you want to go to 3,500, be under the 4,000, it's up to you guys. But I think that's something you probably ought to make a decision on tonight. Because I know Arbor has gotten all the permits they need. And I don't know where they're at with the electric utility. But the sewer stuff and the water, they're good to go. And they've got everything they need to get started, so permits are going to start rolling in. They'll put those 70 homes up, or you, I mean, it'll be quick.
So can we make a motion? You don't have to do a public hearing, but.
I don't know, that's, that's an Amy question.
Amy?
Yes, sorry, I was just taking myself off mute and texting about that exact thing. Yes, we'll have to amend the ordinance, just like we did the first time, whenever we established. This fee, we'll have to have a public hearing and amend the ordinance then. So that just means, I mean, we need, you know, at the bare minimum, just 10 days' notice to publish the notice of the public hearing in the newspaper. So, I mean, we could probably, you know, get it done before the next, well, when's the next town council meeting?
February 3rd, or?
February 3rd.
February 3rd, 9, 10. I mean, Kreen, do you think we could get the public hearing notice in? I know that they're kind of picky about when they get it and when they can publish it here, but.
Yeah, we should be able to get that in later this week.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so yeah, probably at the February 3rd meeting, the ordinance could be introduced. You could have the public hearing, and then as long as everybody's there, you could adopt it that night.
So we probably need to make a motion though, what to say, man?
I make a motion to amend the ordinance for impact fees to $4,000.
Second. All in favor?
All right. That is only for the water, correct?
Only for the water, correct.
Okay, let me ask you this question, on this, I don't, this sheet here is showing if we would go out here to the west water tower and put a well in there. That's showing 7,450,000.
Yep.
And it's showing 900 gallons per minute. I mean, I understand the difference, but what's the explanation between the 900 gallons per minute and the 1,800 gallons per minute? Why would, why would we need the 1,800 versus the 900 versus the 300?
Well, these are all just options. And I think last time when we talked, I used Whitestown as an example. They were about 20 years ago, about one town size, somewhere. They were about 15,000 people then. If you use the 300 gallons a minute, the maximum you'll be able to get is about 5,500 customers, which is about 11,000 or 12,000 people. That's 20 years. If you, maybe that's good enough. Or maybe you want to spend another million dollars and cover yourself for 11,000 customers, or about 20,000, well, over 20,000. That's a decision you guys need to make. We're going to make a recommendation, and like I said, we will bid both options. So if you look at option two and four, those are basically the same size of water plant, okay? It's 300 gallons a minute. Options three and five are the same, they're 600 gallons a minute. So, the plan is to put one filter. These filters are about, um, they're about ten or twelve foot diameter, and they're about thirty, twenty-five to thirty feet long, and they stick outside the building. And we would do one for now, in a space for a second. So that's, that's how you get the expansion. So you wouldn't put the second one in until you needed it. And it would be very, very low cost with that second. As opposed to if you, if you ended up growing to, you know, a Whitestown size, then you've gotta redo the plant a little more, you're gonna spend a little more money. And maybe that's not so bad, because you're gonna be collecting all this EDU money, and it, you're gonna have money to do that. So, when the bids come in, and the three hundred gallon a minute one comes in, let's say it's a million and a half dollars less. I'd probably go with three hundred gallons a minute. And then collect as much EDU money as you can over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years to pay for whatever else you gotta do, uh, to, to the plant in twenty years.
What'd you say the three hundred gallon a minute, what would it serve?
Uh, eventually it'll serve about eleven, twelve thousand people. But you'd have to put that second filter in. Uh, three hundred gallons a minute serves...
Now, you're talking about eleven thousand people divided by three or four to a family to come up with how many homes that is?
We used only two to a home, two point one, I think, is what we used. Um, because that's, if you look at the customers you have now, based on your population, it's about two point one. We usually use two and a half, but we used your actual number at two point one. Um, 'cause there's a lot of people single, or a lot of homes that just have two people. But three hundred gallons a minute would be about thirty-nine hundred customers. Or, I'm sorry, thirty-nine hundred people. Uh, about eighteen hundred customers. And right now, you've got seven hundred and forty-nine. And that includes the seventy that have been approved by IDAM for the OAKER homes.
Good.
So Dan, if I'm reading this correctly, it's going to cost approximately three million dollars more to have another plant out to the west, rather than everything existing right down here.
Yeah, and let me explain to you why it costs more. Uh, we, we put in there to buy property, uh, we would have to drill more wells, or more, another well. And we've gotta put in about three thousand feet of looping water main to move the larger sized pipe to the west side. Because right now, the system is built east to west. So all the large pipe is on the east side, the smaller pipe's on the west. You do have a loop, but it's not that big. So we put three thousand feet of, uh, water main reinforcement. That's some of the reasons why it's more. Another well...
So all of our streets from here to there are gonna be torn up?
If we do the west.
Well, not necessarily, if we do the west, it won't, will it?
You gotta put in three thousand feet of, uh, additional water main. Not all the streets, one street. Maybe two. I'm not very confident about that. Well, if you've been around construction, it looks like a bomb went off.
We, we've already proved, have one big well drilled already, right?
That's correct.
And is that the plan, was to drill that out here?
At the east end, yes. The other thing on the west side that concerns, uh, the, uh, well drillers is they're concerned about it being closer to the aquifer. Uh, that tends to, um, according to these guys, it tends to foul wells up a little bit. Gets them a little more brackish, uh, which would mean that we would spend a little more money in filters, uh, in media in the filters to clean the water. Uh, but we don't know that. These are all speculation based on the well driller's experience. And he, he thought it would be a little risky, I think you were in that meeting. He was concerned about it being a little risky to go out, go over there to do that. That's still an option, we're gonna keep it in our report. I think it's a very viable option. Um, and it's still gonna be a... I wanted to let you know what those numbers were.
He felt very confident about drilling down here, since we already have wells down here.
Very confident about that, that offer. He was very confident about that offer.
I'm looking more about this town in fifteen, twenty years, and what it looks like. And I think it's better served on the west side personally, than up... I don't know why the state allows them to, to dig down deep enough to be in the aquifer to start with, but they do.
They do. They do.
I have a question, this is gonna circle back to what we're talking about, but it's not gonna start there. I know what, I know what my opinion is, I'm not sure about you guys. Uh, the electric that we have to run down Grant Street to go out there, right now, the cost we have on that is, again, these are rough numbers we're talking about, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Could be more, could be less. My attitude going into this thing was that Arbor needs to pay for that, they've got this front end, it's on nobody else. You guys are aware that, they came to me, said you guys signed some kind of paper that you were gonna have electricity out there, which we've since found out is bogus. They pretty much lied to my face about having that paper. So, I'm back on the attitude that they can pay whatever that costs. And they can pay for that, and that's seven hundred and fifty thousand bucks. Now, here's where I circle back. If we can get them to agree to pay that seven hundred and fifty thousand bucks, the electric utility is actually in pretty good financial shape. If we can convince them to put that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the water plant, and we can pay for that electric, and it will still be pretty well, I think, we need to go over this to make sure I'm right, but I think the electric company would still be in pretty good financial shape. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars more off of that bill.
Yep.
I don't know what to do with that or not, can we?
Now, I don't know if that's legal or not, but I don't know why it's not legal as long as we go to them and say, "Look, you're gonna pay seven hundred and fifty thousand bucks," or whatever the number is, "but we would really rather you pay it on the water plant." We haven't told them they're paying for the electric, and then we're moving it from the electric to the water, and we're asking them to pay that money on the water plant.
Well, according to Amy, there was nothing signed about either one of them, so theoretically, they, they should've paid for both of them.
Well, and I'm not against that either, if you can get that out of it. But even if they do that, even if they say, even if they agree, let's say they agree to put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the water, and seven hundred and fifty thousand on the electric, and we say, "Why don't you just put a million and a half on the water and forget the electric?" Now you got a million and a half dollars to help pay for that water thing, and we'll still be okay on electric. We don't have any money in water. We're gonna have to borrow whatever's left. I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know if we can do that, I don't know if they'll do that. But you got seven hundred and fifty thousand if we get the OAKER thing. And if they'll pay seven hundred and fifty on the water, and agree to pay the other seven hundred and fifty on the water, and we'll take care of the electric, that'd be a good ways for paying for that thing. And the rain's come down, right, Dan?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just throwing that out there for people to fall. I've been thinking about that for a while now, and again, I don't know what the legalities are, but I think if we say we want you to pay for the water instead of the electric, I don't see how that could be illegal. If we told them they're paying for the electric, and then we moved it to the water, I can see how it would be.
I think that this might be something that we need to look into, because we want it with our group that's doing this.
Well, I agree, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we need to come up with this tonight, because it's something to think about, discuss, find out.
We can run all kinds of different scenarios on the rates, based on what we end up with. And we wouldn't need to do anything with the rates until we actually did the project. And then make a determination of what we want to do. But with Arbor moving forward on phase one, it's probably a decision, based on what Max is saying, that we oughta have taken care of here.
Dan, once they start moving dirt, with your experience, do you know about how many months before they actually start building the homes?
Probably a couple months, two, three months.
Oh, wow.
Pretty quick. Sometimes it's a bit faster than that. Uh, they may do the model house while they're moving, they may, within a month, have that model house started and done in a month and a half. And that's pretty quick.
Anybody got any more questions, Dan? No? You got it good down there?
All right.
Do you have anything to sign?
No, we don't have anything else to sign, except you have to sign these before you can adjourn.
Just claims.
You have to sign these before you can adjourn.
Okay. Sarah, have you, uh...
No, not, not right now, I think we'll, we'll be good soon.
Okay.
So we've got two payroll dockets in there that we always sign, and then there's two batches on the APVs to sign. There's another one in there.
Go ahead.
One, one group banded is January, and one group banded is December. Those are our payroll dockets, that we sign each time. Yeah, yeah, everybody signs those, and everybody signs the APV register. All of that needs to be replaced in your handy dandy little book. Oh, well, he didn't get out of here like I thought he was going to, but I thought he was gonna try to get ahold of you. Oh, are you still old, are you still old computer? Oh my gosh. Yeah, maybe he's a computer. Yeah, and try to, try to get ahold of him. I don't, sometimes when I try to get ahold of him, it might take him until the next day to get back to me. I don't know his other job, I don't know... It was the day, so he was in here with me, well, we got here around about eleven twenty, eleven thirty, something like that.
I remember him being here, and I had to take a seat.
And in fact, I think when it was time for him to leave, and I looked at the clock, and I said, I said, "You're not gonna be over there," I said, "with the weather, you're probably still down the hill." So, but I thought he was gonna try to call you on his way home, but yeah, try to go ahead and calling, texting, emailing, whatever. But yeah, I think, yeah, if your computer's that old, you are... I ain't had mine done yet. You know what, right now, that's the least of my worries.
I got three cases to do, I'll be spending all day on our trunks.
Yeah, you know, when, when you show up in this, and not in beautiful, when I skim the crowd, you're... Could you explain to everybody else? Yeah, I don't blame you. I don't blame you.
All right, thank you.
All righty, see ya.
There's three here, right, there're two in this one, you're looking at here?
There's, no, Bruce has a second one, there's two, like that, what you have in that little van, there's two pages like that as well.
There's another thing in here?
No, it's in what Bruce has, Bruce has it down there.
Okay, well, I signed that one and this one.
Yes, and this one, then you're ready to pass it on down. Yeah. So I gotta get, get a mailbox hooked up for Randy and Stephen to come and figure out what's going on with yours. Your town email.
Oh.
And why you're not able to get in it. Now, your computer that you are using, um, is it a laptop, or is it a desktop computer? Okay.
I've got a laptop, but I don't have it on here with my phone, so... I don't, I don't use it for anything else.
So, what I need to do is get you and Stephen hooked up, so that Stephen can come to town and come down there and get your own computer fixed, so that...
And it's probably already in there, somebody I think sent it over there. But I don't remember how to get it in there. I think it's already there. I don't get on that, the same way I get on Facebook. I gotta click on something else, so I can grab what that is, I think it's on there, but I don't remember.
Do you do Gmail for, and, and another?
I don't do Gmail, I don't have any one.
Okay, well, okay, so our town email stuff is through Google.
Well...
So we have to go into Google to get into your town email.
Okay, well, that's what I have, I think that's one of the things I need to click on. And I don't, because I don't go through Google, I use that. Something with the GoSee Firefox.
Through Edge? I mean, you can still go through Edge.
It goes through Edge, and it actually goes Firefox, and it comes up on there.
But you, you still have to type in google.com to be able to get to your town email.
Yes, oh, okay, well, I don't... I think, I don't think I have to do that, I can just click, yeah, there's two there and one there, it's three of them. I think I click on the Google icon, and then it comes up with something to click on. It's real simple, get on it, what you ever did, it should be now. That one in this area, I guess. I think it's on there, I just didn't show them what I need to do to get on it.
Here's what I don't do to start with. No, that's just a copy I... I might just have Stephen go in and set up a new password for you, then let me come down and see if I can get you in.
Okay.
Okay.
Be careful, that might be a wall.
I need you.
Huh?
I need, I need us to get together here for too long.
See you guys.
Bye, Dan, thank you. Bye, Dan, thank you.
And you'll have to be pretty soon, because I'm leaving.
You're going south, aren't you?
February the seventh, I'm getting out of this land.
I'm canceling here.
I may get down there, and I may never come back.
How long are you staying?
After seeing this.
The one you took, I have a ton, yeah.
I said, you can stay here, you can fly down when you're done.
You know, I can remember when I used to think that, like, January, February, I want to be gone, and not be around here at all. But you know what, a couple of years ago, when we went to Arizona, we went for two full weeks, and by the time, ten days rolled around, we were great.
Well, see, she would only go around ten weeks at the beginning. Yeah, I mean, we were kind of the same, what, sitting around doing nothing, which is kind of hard at that time.
Is that one done in ten more?
Then you get home, and it's like fifteen degrees, you're not doing this, and you're not doing this, and you're still just sitting around, but you're sitting around and it's cold. And as you, as you did, we went for two weeks blocks, this was the first time.
I'll get that stuff back, it hasn't been signed.
And it's like, you get, you start to get used to it, you get where you can, but the thing is, it's like, it's...
It's all signed.
Oh, I know.
The first year we ran it, what is it?
Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-five. One favor? Anybody want to contest?
The first year we went down there, I think the condo was like twenty-two hundred dollars, and most of the condo was a thousand dollars. There was a thousand dollars in cleaning fees, taxes. Half of it is just...
All right, bye.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you.
And then, of course, food is going there, and those guys we go down there with, we want to do that, you don't want to go to the camp. You want to go to the local thing.
Right. It's expensive, oh, I know.
It's crazy what that costs. There's a place called The Whale's Tale, right across the way, right on the beach.
No.
And we went over there for lunch, and it was like forty-five bucks.
We didn't eat too damn much.
We didn't have that much. It's just that...
Oh, I know, I mean, you know, all the food at J.C. casinos, take it home for us or whatever. I mean, just for the two of us, and this, and no drinks, I mean, it's usually twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars. Now, I always get usually two meals out of money, but still.
Now, I don't get by that cheap with Jim, and I go up there and eat, it was thirty-three dollars or more.
Did you order drinks?
I get spaghetti, yeah, I have spaghetti and a coke.
See, I, I don't get a drink, because I take it and we go home. That's, I mean, there's three dollars a person, right there.
Well, and then you have to tip.
Well, I usually, I usually tip a little bit when I take it home anyway.
That's the other thing, you can go in, and the food's so expensive, but that makes the tip more expensive.
Uh-huh.
And it's like you're happy to get twelve dollars.
Yeah.
Hey, we go, we go to Stuckey's though, we don't pay that.
Yeah, they're right, we just have to get it in, like, that's all. I asked Gary, he said he got a long gig with Stuckey.
I talked to Gary, and then I talked to Stuckey, and they both gave the same story. Hell, I don't know about that, but...
Stop the screen.
Next week.
Yes.